Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting of the Fair Political Practices Commission. And welcome to new commissioners who are present here today for the first full new commission meeting. Would you like to call the roll? Commissioner Kasher?
Yeah.
Commissioner Eskivitz?
Commissioner Eskivitz?
Here.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Chair Rabel? Here. Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda that is actually not on the agenda, but this is the time for anybody in the audience who would wish to speak about an item that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody that wants to speak about it? Public comment item? Okay. Hearing none. Then we will move to the legislation. And I'd like to take a moment to speak generally about the greater context of the legislation that's going to be considered here today. I think most people in the audience know, but the new commissioners may not be aware, that the Political Reform Act was passed by the voters after Watergate. And a significant feature of the Watergate scandal that caused a great deal of concern for people were the anonymous expenditures of large sums of money, at least large for the time, not for now, to fund criminal activities. The ballot statement for the Political Reform Act said that this caused serious decline in public confidence in the governmental process. And the remedy was the Political Reform Act, which was to restore confidence in government by requiring campaign and personal public official financial disclosure. So disclosure of campaign finance information was the pillar on which the Political Reform Act was built, and it's the essence of the work of the commission. Disclosure of information about contributors to campaigns in advance of an election, when the information has meaning to the voters, has been a hallmark of the commission's efforts in the last couple of years. And this was exemplified, but was not the sole example of it, by litigation in the 2012 election, when the commission attempted to require an Arizona group to provide information about its activities, or to submit to an audit to ensure that they were complying with California law relating to the disclosure of donors in certain cases. The group had never contributed to an election in California prior, and they made a significant contribution a couple of weeks before the election to a PAC in California. And the Arizona 501(c)(4) refused to provide the information that was requested. And so we engaged in substantial litigation, culminating with the California Supreme Court unanimously ruling that they had to submit to an audit by the FPPC in advance of the election. Due to this highly-publicized event, many members of the California Legislature were very interested in introducing legislation to enhance FPPC's authority to obtain information prior to an election. The FPPC routinely provides assistance to any member of the legislature interested in introducing legislation to amend the PRA, to ensure that it's technically correct, and also that it furthers the purposes of the act. And that's what staff has done in this situation, and that's why they are coming before you to request your consideration. So I'll turn it over to you, Zach. Zach Sukie-Brah.
Okay. Sukie-Brah, Legislative Coordinator. Good afternoon, Chair Rabel and Commissioners. Today, we're presenting a set of six legislative bills for open discussion and asking the commission sponsorship of these bills. At the beginning of this legislative session, staff is contacted by several legislators seeking help with drafting various legislative proposals. Some of these legislators were reacting in response to the Americans for Responsible Leadership case that Ann just spoke about from last year. The commission, at the time, expressed concern over these activities and informed staff that they would like such issues addressed. After studying the events of last year and researching the best possible ways to prevent such activities in the future, staff has developed the bills we are presenting to you today along with the legislatures. These bills have been referred to policy committees at the legislature, and hearings will be held in the coming weeks. Given the timing of the legislative process, we ask the commission to decide whether to sponsor these bills at this time. Should the commission choose to sponsor these bills, staff will then be able to testify before legislative committees, not just with technical testimony, but as advocates for these bills. And so we can go through each bill one by one and have an open discussion at this time. We'll go ahead and start with SB 27. This bill addresses disclosure of nonprofit campaign activity. The bill would require nonprofit organizations to disclose donors when those donors have reason to know their funds will be used to make contributions or expenditures. The bill provides presumptions for when a donor has reason to know their donation will be used for political purposes, including when the organization has made contributions or expenditures of $1,000 or more in the calendar year or the preceding four years, and when an organization has made payments totaling $500,000 in California in the preceding year for contributions and expenditures. Under the bill, the commission will also maintain a website where the top 10 contributors of $10,000 or more to committees that raise $1 million or more will be listed.
Do the commissioners have any questions?
Yes.
Please, Commissioner Wasserman.
Since for myself and some of my colleagues here, this is the first opportunity we've had to look at legislation and address whether to sponsor it. I probably will ask you some basic questions for each of these. The first is, and it is very basic, so this is, tone-wise, it simply is, it's not a joke or anything, it's, why is this necessary? Why is this particular piece of SB 27 necessary in light of what we already have in place?
Okay. It's necessary. It's in response to the case from last year. We felt it would be stronger to actually have it enacted into law. Right now, we do have a similar provision in regulation, but this one adds the additional $500,000 requirement for contributions made in the past year. It's stronger than our current regulation, and it definitely addresses the case from last year where the $11 million was being spent in California.
But the position of the commission is that the powers are already there for the commission and have been exercised in relation to regulation that exists? Is that what I hear you saying?
Sure. Commissioner Wasserman, this is Zach Morzini, General Counsel. What this bill would do is ensure that we get the disclosure on the front end, rather than having to run into court to enforce audits and subpoenas for records. So what this actually does is it codifies these presumptions. So when a nonprofit organization steps into California for the first time and dumps a bunch of money into an election, they are required right then to disclose their donors. So this would work on the front end versus what we were trying to do on the back end. That's why we believe these presumptions are very important. Now, they are rebuttable presumptions, of course, because we don't want to get, well, under federal law, we can't require disclosure of donors to a nonprofit that had no idea their money would be used in California. This bill safeguards that interest while establishing sound presumptions that if a donor gives to a nonprofit organization and that money makes its way into California, that they had reason to know, they were on notice, that that money was coming to California.
So I'll keep looking at the chair, because I'm not sure what the process is for.
Well, if you have further questions, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So speaking of the presumptions, if the organization has made contributions of expenditures of $1,000 or more during the calendar year, or any of the preceding four calendar years, the group cannot take advantage of the presumption that the donor did not have reason to know, et cetera, et cetera. Why is that particular threshold considered?
Currently, that's a threshold for becoming a committee in California, and subject to the Political Reform Act and its regulations. So if the nonprofit organization has already met the threshold of being a committee in California, the donors to it are on notice, by definition, that that's a political committee in California.
So if one of the other bills adjusts that to 2,000, then this would probably be adjusted to harmonize?
Do you have further questions, Commissioner Wasserman?
Well, I'm also not clear on how our process. After the staff makes their presentation and we ask some questions, then that the public comes forth and makes their statement?
Yes, absolutely.
So I think I'm going to reserve any further questions to them.
Sounds good. Commissioner. Thanks very much for your explanation. So this doesn't put a burden on the individual, it only puts a burden on the organization?
Exactly. The reporting is by the organization. The individual will be disclosed.
Commissioner Kasher?
Is there a budgetary component to this particular piece of legislation? Is there going to be an impact on staff time, costs associated? And has there been any consideration or inclusion in the bill that would provide for any additional funding? Is it needed, or is it going to be absorbed by staff?
This is totally absorbable by staff, and in fact, will hopefully save money down the road in terms of enforcement's litigation costs. Instead of having to, hopefully actively, go to court to enforce subpoenas to get disclosure, we'll get it on the front end, so hopefully we'll save money.
Do any of the commissioners have other questions at this time? Okay. Is there a member of the public that would like to come forward and speak to this particular piece of legislation, SB 27? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Daniel Abramson of Reed &amp; Davidson. I would only ask that you think about this simply because this is a codification of an existing regulation. And I think, for those of us who practice in this area and work with your regulations every day, this particular regulation is very cumbersome, and very difficult, and very difficult to apply. And it's a regulation that applies to the people who are sort of, I wouldn't say least sophisticated, because they're often very sophisticated, but least involved in the political process. It applies to nonprofit organizations that are doing lots of other things that are not necessarily familiar with your rules and your process, and they may not have political law counsel to advise them. So I was a little troubled. I think, I would hope that you would consider alternative avenues of reaching the goal, getting to the goal that you're trying to get to, which is, you know, obviously, regulation, or at least some sort of disclosure of money spent by nonprofits that are not registered political committees. But perhaps before we enshrine this regulation into the statute, it might be helpful to give some thought to alternative ways of reaching that goal, because I think there may be, obviously, this is something other regulatory agencies have struggled with, and the FEC has dealt with it. And I think there are other alternatives out there, other than the first bite rule. And I think the first bite rule can be problematic, so that would be my comment.
With regard to your issue, if you don't mind, do you have any thoughts about ways that the people that you think are nonprofits that should not be affected by this rule could be exempted, perhaps, from the rule, as opposed to actually eliminating the legislation in totality?
I wouldn't eliminate it, I would try to replace it. I would, if I was writing the rule, you know, I think the most effective rule that actually we've seen in this area was a regulation that had been adopted by the FEC several years ago. It's not in effect today, it was struck by a court under procedural, on procedural grounds. But it, instead of looking, it looked to specific solicitations, it looked to how money was raised. I think you can, it created, the rule and thinking of, created a presumption that if money was raised and it informed the donor that their money would be used for a specific political purpose, then that created certain presumptions. I know you have some rules to that effect in place, but I do think that first bite is really difficult. People make a contribution somewhere in California, four years later, there's different staff at the organization, there are different people making the decisions, they may have had no idea that they even did. I mean, people don't, they don't even, nonprofits don't even necessarily know that they have made a contribution or an expenditure. These are terms that we use on our day-to-day basis, and it's, we know exactly what it means to make a contribution or expenditure. But they may think that, oh, I didn't make an expenditure, I just hosted a fundraising event. That was three years ago, that doesn't mean anything. So it's hard, I don't have all the answers, I don't have a rule in mind that I would replace this with immediately, but I hope you would give it a little bit of thought before putting it into the statute, where it really is going to be very difficult for the commission to change it.
The first bite rule would pretty much go away with this regulation. That's the whole point. The first bite rule is in regulation, correct?
Yeah.
But I think what the voters of, the people of the state of California are entitled to is to know on the front end. And if the people knew that their money was going to be used in California for political purposes, then disclosure is appropriate, so that the voters get this information when it's important, rather than exempting them because they haven't taken their first bite yet. This statute establishes presumptions where we can say that you, as a donor, knew your money was coming in to influence California politics. The people of this state are entitled to know your identity.
But I think the issue is, I do understand where you're coming from, I think the issue is that's sort of a fiction, to think that someone who gives money to an organization, these can be large national organizations, they're doing things all over the place. The idea that they are going to know that an entity made a contribution three or four years ago is, it's not the reality. And so the organizations live with this first bite rule, and they know that they become a recipient committee if they do certain things within a certain time period. But it's premised on a fiction, that the donors have some knowledge of what, I mean, you don't even have to be a major donor to trigger first bite. You may have filed no reports whatsoever, you just gave $1,000. So how would any donor be on notice? I would just urge you to think about whether, maybe this is the best approach. I mean, maybe we come together, and this is the best we can come up with, but before we put it in the statute, I just urge you to think about it.
And I just want to comment that the Ninth Circuit, you know, we had lengthy litigation over this provision, when the California Pro-Life Council was claiming that it's just a nonprofit and it doesn't have to reveal its donors when it's spending in California elections. And in that lawsuit, the FPPC prevailed, and the Ninth Circuit approved this limited donor disclosure from nonprofits, and the whole concepts that are in the regulation, and that this bill would move into the statute. So it's, people have looked closely at these disclosure provisions.
My staff and I worked, put a lot of hours, a lot of time, a lot of thought into this. We worked closely with legislative staff and their committees, and we are affirmatively telling you, we believe this is the best idea and the best approach.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to comment about this particular measure? Okay. And so, other questions by the commission?
Oh, Commissioner Wasserman.
Commissioner Wasserman.
So I'm just still thinking about these presumptions right now, because, you know, I'm a little wary of any situation where you're attempting to create something in response to a particular large or prominent case or trend, but what the unintended consequences may be for others. And I think what the gentleman was mentioning about nonprofits, I mean, I think when this is put together, you really are thinking about those nonprofits that are more sophisticated, that are doing certain things in terms to make their contributions. But in my experience with various nonprofits who may have made a foray into the political arena once, I'm concerned about the actual threshold we're talking about. I mean, I understand it's convenient to make it $1,000 for that presumption, based on, you know, the other issues with forming a committee. But, you know, there's a difference between what the entity has to do, and then now someone is being considered a donor, and even though they don't have a reporting, I guess the discussion was about where the burdens fall, certainly there's some sort of burden and potential liability to the, and certainly a privacy interest that is implicated by the individual who has donated to the nonprofit that is now donating $1,000. So, I mean, that's one of my concerns, is why is, why is that, does that threshold really get us to where we, what you're talking about, where you want to go, at the same time balancing out the concerns of basically the little people?
Yes, we believe it does. Once you meet that threshold, you become a committee in California. So it's not exactly accurate to say that they barely forayed into a little California election issue. Once you become a committee, there's obligations attached under existing Political Reform Act. Moreover, as with regard to your first comment, staff and I have been working on this through regulatory process for years and years and years, as how to get more timely and accurate disclosure of money that comes through nonprofit organizations. We did this last year, or 2011, when we made significant amendments to the first bite at the apple rule, which I know we haven't really discussed here, but it was, it's a regulation which attempts to get donor identities through our regulatory scheme. So this wasn't just a reaction to this big case with this $11 million coming into California, we've been working on this for quite a while.
And maybe, to be more explicit, not just working on it, but there is in existence already a regulation that requires exactly that. I think he was, the gentleman who spoke a little earlier, Mr. Abramson, mentioned that. It's already enshrined in our regulations.
I understood that from the staff and from the gentleman. I'm just trying to see where things would hash out. I had something else I wanted to ask you. No, that's all right. I understand, certainly, you put a lot of work into it, but like I said, I'm going to be asking questions, because I just need to have a comfort level with what's going on. That's all.
Do you have any other questions?
This is Commissioner Eskivitz. I have a question about the $1,000 limit. I understand why it exists in the current bill for today. I guess the question I ask is, or the question I had, is whether the bill expressly provides for the change in that amount in the event, if the committee definition has changed in other statutory provisions. In other words, are we going to, you know, five or 10 years down the road, could we be looking at a situation where we have this $1,000 limit, and it's been passed in other parts of committee-related legislation?
Commissioner Eskivitz, this is Zach Morzini again. We're happy to support amendments to this, that instead of specifying $1,000, we cross-reference the committee threshold.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that seems like it would make some sense, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to do that, that's a great idea.
Commissioner Eskivitz, do you have any other comments or questions? All right, is there a motion? Yeah, I'd like to move that we pass the recommendation by staff with the amendment suggested by Commissioner Eskivitz. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskivitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Chair Rabel?
Yes.
Ms. Bra.
Now, we're going to move to AB 552. This bill would create a streamlined process for collection of unpaid fines for our enforcement division. Are there any questions or comments on this one?
No questions by the commissioners? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this Assembly Bill 552? Okay. Not hearing any questions or comments, is there?
I move that we sponsor it.
Okay. Second. Commissioner Kasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskivitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Chair Rabel?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to AB 800. This bill will make clear that office holders retain their status as candidates until they both terminate their committees and leave office. The bill would update the committee qualification threshold. It would establish criteria for determining when a committee is controlled by a candidate, and would require committee subcontractors to provide necessary information to committees so they can timely disclose expenditure information on campaign reports. The bill would allow candidates more time before their campaign funds become surplus. And the bill would clarify that the commission has the authority to seek injunctive relief and compel disclosure.
Are there questions by the commissioners? Commissioner Nguyen? Thank you. So I understand what this bill does, but is this a problem? I mean, is this something that occurs, where there's this nebulous status at some point, and it's hard to kind of figure out what's going on with the campaign funds?
We do, staff, especially our technical assistance division, we come across this quite frequently with candidates, and sometimes they're caught off guard, and the consequences are significant as to what they can do with their surplus funds. Talking with staff and legal division enforcement and technical assistance, we thought it'd be a good idea to give more buffer room, so that we can, A, avoid the influx of questions that we get when this happens, and the tears that come with those questions, so, yeah.
Are there any other questions by the commissioner? Commissioner Wasserman?
Actually, I'm going to, I want to hold off a little bit, I'm going to see what Elsa said.
All right. Anybody in the public wish to speak about this bill? Mr. Bell?
Good afternoon, Commissioners Chuck Bell, Bell McCandless, and Hiltack. I'm here speaking on my own, and I'm not representing any person or entity. I have submitted a letter to you. First, welcome to the new commissioners. It's actually an interesting and focused meeting, and I'm sure you may look back on this and find that it was a good one, as you get into meetings where you are bogged down in the details of regulations that seem confusing and unusual. Yeah. Notwithstanding staff's efforts to simplify them. My letter really was kind of focused on the enforcement provisions in this bill, and also AB 45. And what I tried to do was to provide you with a little bit of background on what I think the original act provided, in terms of the diffusion of enforcement responsibilities among different agencies and the people. And to provide a little more background on, also, on at least my perspective on the history of the enforcement process here, which I think has been robust. Some people may differ in their beliefs about that, but has been robust in many respects, both in the active role the commission has played in primarily administrative enforcement, but supplementally through civil litigation enforcement, and then also through the acts of other actors, attorney general, district attorneys, city attorneys, and the people, through private attorney general actions. I think the point that I was trying to make in the letter was, this is a big proposed change, it's not a small change. And while I understand the commission staff would like to clarify what the scope of its enforcement powers is, particularly in light of the Arizona case, you know, there's always a question whether one case, sometimes a bad case, can lead to bad law. And I think our perspective is that, at a minimum, before you consider sponsoring legislation, you ought to, particularly of this import and magnitude, you ought to carefully consider it. And, you know, the first opportunity to pass legislation often can be passed in favor of looking at a more considered, more thoroughly-vetted approach to the legislative process. And I think that's particularly appropriate here for you. This is the first legislative hearing in April at which this particular set of proposals will be considered, and those familiar with the legislative process know that sometimes good legislation takes a little bit of time to work out. And I think the gist of my comments- And I think the gist of my comments, although I would oppose some of these provisions as written, the gist of my comments is that you really would benefit from getting a little more input. The legislature would benefit from you looking at this more carefully. They don't have to pass it at the first hearing and I don't think, particularly since we're in an off-year, that you're likely to face situations, even if Arizona were a motivating factor, that are going to make it imperative that you have this authority. And as it is, I would say that expanding the audit authority and the manner in which that's done in these draft bills really is quite an expansion. I mean, it would allow essentially unlimited audits at any time, right up to an election. And I mentioned in the last paragraph of the current letter, as a treasurer and a counsel to committees that are involved in the election process, it is extraordinarily burdensome. It may be appropriate in some circumstances, but extraordinarily burdensome to campaigns in the last month of a campaign to have to divert their attention. And believe me, it, it is a diversion, you know, when, when you get the call from the enforcement agency about this, all of a sudden you have to shut down everybody's email systems. You have to make sure that you preserve evidence. You have to involve people in a way in searching for information which they would become bound to preserve and not inadvertently delete or destroy or anything like that in order to, to do this. So this is just an example, I think, of what happens in this process. Yes, the commission should be vigorous in enforcing the law. I'm not suggesting anything otherwise, but to expand your enforcement powers in the fashion that's proposed here, I think, just needs to be thought out a lot more carefully than this initial legislation, legislative drafts would indicate.
Before you leave, Chuck, I'd, I'd like to ask staff to, because you make a good point, to, to respond to the concern about potential excesses that would be, in a way, negative to the electoral process.
Sure. Gary Winnick, Chief of the Enforcement Division. Over the past years at the direction of the commission, we've tried to engage in more regulatory and enforcement activity before the election on the, on the theory and the premise that public disclosure being the key to what we do, that having disclosure or remedies of violations occur before the election has a lot more benefit to the public than sort of a fine afterwards. From our perspective, we tried to do that in a judicious and kind of targeted manner. So I don't disagree with Mr. Bell's point that when we call someone, obviously they have an obligation in many ways to respond. But I can, based on experience of having done this through a couple of election cycles now, to know that generally when we call someone up with a violation before the election, they've recognized the violation and they act very swiftly, literally within a matter of days, to correct it. And that really is what the purpose is of what we're trying to do. I also want to, to make a distinction, because we have some new commissioners too, between an audit and an investigation. Obviously, a lot of our focus is making sure that we don't become a part of the electoral process unnecessarily. That's something that's very, we're very cognizant of. It's very central to our thought process. So we have two tools in our tool, we have several tools in our tool shed, two in our toolbox. Two of them are audits and investigations. An audit isn't an investigation by its very nature. An audit is, is kind of the softer version of that where we're asking to take a look at your records to see if you complied and then to perhaps ask for compliance. That doesn't trigger a lot of the requirements under the act related to investigation, like a letter saying, "We are investigating this," and these sort of timelines associated with it, that in many cases the media or opponents can hook onto to say, "Okay, they're under investigation." The audit is different. The audit is really a review just to look at for compliance. It's not ascribing any value at all to the information we're obtaining. So with that context, you know, we propose this really for two purposes. One, just to clarify our tools with audits, although it is expanding it to, to candidates and ballot measures, but also to continue the direction we've received from the commission to try and get the public the information when it's important, which is before the election. The disclosure after the election has no bearing and, and the truth is, a lot of elections are competitive. There's, there's two sides that deserve fairness and full disclosure and all that and, and the obligation to play by the rules, so.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Bell. I think it really enriches our conversation to have, you know, practitioners come up and really explain to us, you know, the other side of the story and I appreciate staff's comments too. I would only say that this bill has not been heard in committee yet and there will be many stops along the way to make, you know, proposed changes. And I do think it's a bill that deserves our support at this point, but I would ask staff to bring, you know, proposed amendments back to us and really keep us informed. I do think it's a, a big bill. I agree with Mr. Bell, it's a big bill, but I, I, you know, I do think that it is furthering the kinds of activities that we ought to be, you know, involved with, so.
For some clarity, are you saying that it should be a support as opposed to us being a sponsor? Are you making a distinction or you're just?
No, I don't. I was not making a distinction unless you, you know, unless staff has some kind of distinction.
And if I could, Commissioner, the, every hearing we have, we bring a ledge report back to you, we give you the updates on any of the bills and you have a full opportunity to weigh in literally every, every step of the way.
May I respond to?
Please, please do.
First, I'm only speaking to the enforcement provisions of this bill. The other provisions actually are salutary and honestly, most, for the most part, I don't oppose them.
Thank you for the clarification.
But the enforcement piece of this is big. As far as the discussion about the difference between an audit and an investigation, you know, it's, I, I don't subscribe to the theory that an audit is really a soft investigation. In fact, in many ways, it's a more robust form of investigation than what you, what's in your current toolbox. Because in your current toolbox, if someone files a complaint, you have an opportunity to respond. The commission has to make a threshold determination whether it's going to proceed. These things become public. Generally, if complaints are made, they're not self-generated, they're generated by opponents. Opponents, and I've been there, you know, and represented a lot of people who wanted to file and did file complaints with the FPPC and, you know, the first thing they do is go to the press and that's just part of our political processes. There's nothing wrong with that. But an audit really says, "Bring in all of your records" and there's really no limitation upon that. So it's sort of like in the middle of a campaign or near the end of it, when you have daily reports, you've got 24-hour reports, you've got to basically, you know, shut the, shut the records, close them off, copy them, bring them in for the commission to inspect. I have no problem with the commission, you know, asking people about compliance, you know, and pointing out to them what the requirements are. But an audit is a serious thing. It's not just another, another little piece of the toolbox. It's bigger than an investigation and even though it might not have associated with it some of the formalities of your regulation and the back and forth, it is important. I generally think that it's better to get some vetting beforehand rather than getting into the midstream with the legislation and your, you know, even if you, if you do sponsor the legislation to some extent, you lose control of it over in the legislative process to other factors in that process that you, you really don't have a large amount of control over. You can always pull your support, but I've found it pretty rare that the commission has ever sponsored legislation and then pulled the support of it. It just doesn't work that way. That's not reality. So I think it's better to, to do this in a more considered way upfront, get some input. I don't think that the state of campaign disclosure and, and the world, if you will, is at stake in this quarter of 2013 that the commission need to rush into this without getting some other input, getting a better, better crafted piece of legislation. Thanks.
Commissioner Kasher?
This is really perhaps a point of clarification in just, in getting to, familiar with this, these procedures myself. When there's an audit that's initiated, at what point does that become public? Does, can that then turn into an investigation? What's the kind of procedures around that, an audit?
Sure. Just to start your question off, let me just clarify something Mr. Bell said also. There's a regular audit process that we engage in, that we're required to, the mandatory random audits, and then there's some mandatory audits we're required to do where we look at an entire campaign to see whether or not they comply with the act. That's done on a regular cycle. We also have the power to do discretionary audits where we, on our own initiative, take a look at a particular issue. The only distinction I wanted to make from what Mr. Bell says, you know, for a discretionary audit, we're generally looking perhaps at a single transaction or a single occurrence. So for a full audit, I agree, you know, the, the process of producing all those records, particularly in the middle of a campaign, I think would be burdensome, but I think we're talking about a slightly different animal here in that discretionary audit is generally looking at one thing in particular, which I think wouldn't create quite a burden. In direct response to, to your question, when we initiate an audit, we don't put out any releases on the audit. If someone were to ask what audits we have going, we would confirm we had an audit. Any records we acquire from the course of the audit are confidential. Their records actually required on an audit are more confidential even than the ones we acquired during an investigation under state law. And this is guided by the act and then there are provisions of the government code that talk about how government agencies acquire information and how it's subject to release. Once the results are found, the audit findings are found, that also becomes public. Again, it's not something we put a press release out on or that we even publish on our website, but if someone were to call and ask, "What audit findings do you have?", that's something that could be made public. But generally enforcement, like the entire agency, is looking for compliance. That's really the purpose of everything we do here, from education and training to enforcement. We're generally calling people up and asking them to fix an error if there was one on their own, which is 99.9% of the time, the, what happens.
Other members of the audience, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Jason Conney, Nielsen Merksmur, also Vice Chair of the California Political Attorneys Association. I'm here speaking on behalf of the CPA Executive Committee today with two purposes. One, to support Mr. Bell's cogent and informed letter. And second, to make a modest proposal in regard to both AB 800 and AB 45. To take a step back, the commission's being asked to sponsor instead of support six pieces of legislation that fall generally into three subject category areas. The first that we're talking about now are enforcement powers and particularly pre-election enforcement powers for the enforcement division. The second we just spoke about is codifying the first bite rule. And the third is AB 1090. Two of these areas are in reaction to a specific incident in the last election cycle. That is, the enforcement powers, at least that portion of AB 45, and the first bite rule. Two of these areas of legislation would dramatically expand both the enforcement powers and also the responsibilities of the legal division and the technical enforcement advice division of the FPPC, particularly in regard to AB 1090. The CPAA isn't taking a position on the first bite legislation and thinks it's premature to take a position on AB 1090 since the Department of Justice has yet to take a position on that legislation and we offer that for consideration. Instead, these comments and our suggestion is focused on AB 45 and 800 and, as Mr. Bell said specifically, on the enforcement and pre-election provisions. Mr. Bell's letter makes the fundamental point that an expansion like this should have the, the framework and the hindsight that reaches back, as the, as the chair said, to Watergate and the purposes of the act, not just to one election and to one set of situations. And I'd mirror the comments that have just been made, that an audit power is not a small power and in fact, by moving the audit power into the pre-election period, you're creating a new enforcement mechanism that doesn't have the safeguards that either a post-election audit does or, as Mr. Bell said, an investigation has. So that brings me to the modest proposal. At the end of Mr. Bell's letter, he makes the suggestion that you have a working group give you some input on this topic and the CPA would like to propose that, particularly for the enforcement powers. This is not unprecedented. The regulated community has commented on enforcement powers before and we think a very positive development in recent commission history is to solicit these working groups to think about difficult questions like this. There was such a working group on the GIFT regulations as they were developing. There is such a working group that's going to start working on the conflict of interest regulations. And in fact, there was such a working group this morning talking about the law, expansion, potential expansion of lobby disclosure. These are very useful forums that bring in not only the regulated community, but we would welcome Common Cause and the League of Women Voters and others to have a discussion about this very important topic before the commission makes the decision to sponsor it and to solicit information that can help shape this legislation and frankly, to help inform our association as to the position it would take on this. As most of you know, we represent candidates from council members to the legislators who are going to be looking at this legislation, to the governor, and have grave concerns about what this could do to the electoral process. That being said, we have members who have served on the commission, who've headed enforcement, who've worked on enforcement staff, who I think could provide very useful insight and thoughts and, from our perspective, consider this legislation. So our modest proposal is that, is that you delay sponsorship of this legislation or at least this portion of the legislation until a working group can be convened. And if you accept that modest proposal, we're happy to submit a list of possible names to participate.
Can I ask staff a question in response to this? Is it possible to do that, to bifurcate the legislation and what a support would be? Or would it be, if we were to go along with the proposal that has been made, would it be best just to table our, our, this, the decision on this until such a group could be working or how, what's the process, legislative process?
As someone who spent four years handling bills in the legislature, sponsoring a bill will be difficult to bifurcate out specific provisions of it. So I don't mean a phrase is an all or nothing, but I think for sponsorship, it'd be tough to bifurcate that out. For a support letter of a bill, I think you could pick and choose particular provisions of a bill more easily than with a sponsorship. Then it's just a, sorry, a commission issue of how logistically to do that.
So the commission could take an incremental step of sponsoring certain portions, but hold back, or sorry, supporting.
Right.
This is Zach Morzini. I, I just want to make one, one kind of overall comment. I do appreciate all the comments we've heard this morning, but, but to me, it, it sounds like it's just plain opposition to this. So I'm not sure where we go from there. It's a policy call for the commissioners up here. Pre-election audit authority is good or bad. So while I'm happy to, you know, listen to other points of view, nothing else has been offered. I think the enforcement division and the legislator we've been working with on this are in support of that. So I guess I'd just leave it at that.
Gary Winnick again, Chief Enforcement. I guess the only other fact I'd put in, the enforcement division already has discretionary audit authority. It's the types of committees that are, that we would have the ability to have that discretionary audit that would be expanded. But I'll also say we have now two election cycles, at least since I've been here, where we've been using it. I mean, currently we have more than a half dozen discretionary audits open. So it's not something that doesn't have a track record associated with it. with it.
Yes. And, and this, to be clear, discretionary audits prior to the election that you have accomplished?
Correct. For two election cycles, we've conducted targeted discretionary audits for a variety of different circumstances. Again, with the one notable exception resulting in people correcting errors before the election.
Okay. Commissioner Winn?
Again, I very much appreciate public comments, and I think it does enrich the conversation. I'm fairly familiar with the legislative process, too. I think sponsoring a bill doesn't preclude us from accepting any incoming suggestions or amendments. And I'm still supportive of the bill. I don't think it's necessarily perfect. I don't know enough about it to know whether it's perfect, but we could still be open to a deliberative process. And, you know, I don't, I don't see a problem with us sponsoring or supporting a bill like this and still be engaged in the conversation.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Going back to the question, the urgency, I don't, I think, I'm pretty much in favor of the idea of going through this a little more. And, you know, the, the issue about whether or not the input we get turns out to be simply opposition, purely opposition, is less important to me than the actual process of, of perhaps working through this a little bit more. And that's, that's really all I'm thinking about right now.
Madam Chair, could I?
Yes, please, Mr. Conney.
The well-taken comment by the General Counsel. I wouldn't say that there isn't a purpose to dialogue. And in fact, I think our recent experience in both the GIFT regulation and just today with the lobby regulation, is that it's surprising what kind of consensus you can find when you bring people together in a room and have them hash things out. One, and two, there's experience to be brought to the table of people who've dealt with these things over the years. And it's done in good faith. I can't say that the California Political Attorneys Association would end up supporting this legislation one way or the other. It certainly wouldn't now, but that doesn't mean that that input couldn't be positive even before you make a sponsorship. And then as to the second comment, I just want to underscore, Mr. Bell made it in the context, in terms of urgency, in the context of, you know, a bad case making bad law. When we were talking about this legislation and the enforcement powers in particular, on some phone calls among the CPA members, someone made the point of, if you had a medical incident happen to you, and afterwards, the doctor said, you know, it's fine for you to have a glass of wine afterwards, that doesn't give license to have the bottle. That is, sometimes you can take incremental actions or take an incremental response without going so far. That's truly one of our concerns, having experienced and being on one end of many enforcements over the years. And I think that we could offer safeguards and perspectives in that regard.
Are there any other questions by Commissioners? Commissioner Eskovitz, are you still there?
I am, yes.
How long do you have?
I can stay.
Oh, good. Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure that you're available. Okay. What is the will of the Commission on this? Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Staff's recommendation to sponsor this bill.
Is there a second? Not here. Can, all right. I'll second the motion. Is there discussion?
Commissioner Kasher?
No, wait, wait, discussion. Commissioner Wasserman?
So are we going to make a comment?
Yes.
Well, I was just saying that I, I'm probably going to vote no on this, because I think we, we could benefit from the working group, even if we do end up in the same, same place. Not that I want these processes to continue ad infinitum, but I think it would be helpful in this situation with the comprehensive nature of what's being presented before us. Thank you.
If I can just respond to that, we will absolutely continue to work, and there's nothing prohibiting us from putting together a working group to look at amendments. But I do think it's important that the Commission take a position on this. If, if therefore this type of change to our, the Political Reform Act, then that's what Staff is going to work with. Now, to the extent we get more developed ideas from interested parties that want to work with us, we're absolutely happy to bring those before the Commission in legislative reports, and perhaps seek amendments to the existing bill. This, the process isn't over with this Commission's vote. It's still a work in progress.
Let me ask you a question about that, Zach. I mean, one of the, one of the issues that's been raised that resonates with me is the concern about sort of a lack of due process, that is, a concern that enforcement might, and perhaps you would want to answer that, to Mr. Winnick. I mean, the, the concern that there is no way to constrain potentially excess of enforcement behavior in, in this bill. And I, I'd like to hear a response to that concern, and whether or not, and whether or not it would be amenable to some provisions that might give greater confidence to the public and the regulated community that due process will be adhered to.
Sure. If I can make two points, Madam Chair. First, the whole reason we're here today at a special hearing is because the First Policy Committee is about to occur on these bills. That's why the timing has occurred now, rather than waiting for the later. Because these are concepts that at least Staff is recommending support on, we want to give the Commission opportunity to give our authors the ability to say that the FBPC supports those concepts. Absent that, that can be detrimental to their efforts to get the bill moving, to further that discussion. Anyone who's ever worked a legislative bill understands that anytime you look at a bill, by the time it gets to enrollment at the end of the process, it has 15 amended dates on it, because the process, the legislature has its process to deliberate on these very same issues, and to take amendments literally at every stop along the way, from Policy Committee, perhaps one or two, to Appropriations Committee, to the floor, and then start all over again in another House throughout the course of the year. But you have to get past the First Policy Committee to have that discussion. So our, our thought process in bringing that to you today was to keep the discussion going by letting the legislature know that these are concepts we support, even though there may be things down the road through the deliberative process that Mr. Marzini described will occur, and will by its very nature occur. To your specific question on reining Gary Winnick in as the Chief of Enforcement, I think you have-
Or whoever it is.
Correct. No, understood. I, I think there are, there's certainly discussion to be had about what the appropriate measures are to do that, and certainly we're open to that. Currently, what's in place are a few things. One, you get information on a lot of the actions I take on a monthly basis, where you can review and give me direction on it. I can't initiate any civil action of any type, short of just enforcing a subpoena, without your express permission and understanding why we're pursuing that action, and getting your direction with a majority vote of the Commission to pursue that. And ultimately, any action we take comes back to you for approval. Fines, civil judgments, anything we're pursuing along those lines is always coming back to you for approval. Every resolution of every case we have is posted on the website and has access to everyone. I work for you, your direction for what I should be focusing on, and the parameters by which I should be operating. So I think there's, there are a number of checks in this system. That's not to say there isn't a discussion to be had about more. We as Staff are completely open to that, obviously, and, and you know, and to have robust dialogue. But I think there's a lot of opportunity to do that throughout the course of the year as this bill moves through the process.
It's Commissioner Eskovitz. Given, given the comments and the notion that this is a work in progress that will continue to benefit from ongoing attention, is it, and I'm just kind of getting at the difference between support as opposed to sponsorship for the legislation, but would, would support kind of be more appropriate in the idea of, you know, expressing support for the concept and reserving judgment as this bill continues to, you know, work its way through the process and benefit from a working group or other opportunities for the public and the regulated community to weigh in?
I guess all we can say is the Staff is recommending sponsorship, because we feel the concepts are right in line with where the Commission's direction to us has been, certainly over the past couple of years, but ultimately, for the, for the Commission.
Yeah, I get, I get that much. I got, I got that from the comments from Staff. I guess what I'm trying to understand is the difference in this context between support and sponsorship. I mean, it's a little, maybe to me, it's just the language of it, but sponsoring a bill that's a work in progress, where there's the notion that there's, you know, this is something that could benefit from continued attention, and perhaps a working group seems to me more like a, you know, a concept of, of support with, you know, with the general thrust of the legislation, but, you know, with an acknowledgement that there seem to be some concerns about some of the details of implementation here.
Thank you. Any other points by any of the Commissioners?
I just-
Commissioner Winn?
So I would be willing to amend my motion to a support position rather than a sponsorship, and, and with a, with an opportunity to revisit that as the bill moves and is amended.
I'd second that.
Okay. Commissioner Wasserman, did you have a comment?
It's actually more general than this specific bill, because I think we're going to counter the overall issue again and again. And that has to do with the discussion we've, we've had about what's a work in progress, what's still going to change even after we make a decision, et cetera. Because I've, I've heard the terminology of say, we're sponsor it because we believe in the concept, versus, versus maybe sponsoring something because we actually believe in each and every provision as set forth and what's in front of us. So if there's some, and this, I'm basically asking for some sort of educational statement from Staff with respect to that, and how that, how this process has worked in the past.
Sure. This is Zach Marzini. And the vast majority of these bills, all but one, were here because we agree that this language is good language, that these actual bills are worthy of the Commission's sponsorship. So I didn't mean to mislead people. When I use the term work in progress, this is the legislative process, as Mr. Winnick described. There are going to be amendments, amendments to these bills. So we ask for sponsorship of these bills, which is a, your full support for the concepts, too. Now, we will track these through the process. If they, if these concepts are, are, are no longer being reflected in the bill language, you will be made aware of that, and you can act on that. But sponsorship is, the Commission's imprimatur, that we are working hand in hand with the, with the legislators and their staff on these bills, and, and we're going to lobby for them. We're, we're going to, we're going to be their biggest fans in committee hearings, and we're going to, we're going to stand behind them when we give testimony. So I think it's important. It is a distinction, sponsorship versus support, but I think if the Commission's most comfortable with a support position, and we can revisit sponsorship down the road, Staff can live with that.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Any other comment from the Commission?
Commissioner Kasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskovitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Winn?
Yes.
Chair Rabel?
Yes.
Should we maybe take 45 out of order, because that's sort of a similar conversation, I think?
Okay. Moving on to AB 45, the bill addresses nonprofit disclosure and includes a presumption that a donor to a multi-purpose organization will know or have reason to know their donation will be used to make a contribution or expenditure if the recipient organization has made contributions of $2,000 or more during the calendar year, or the preceding four years, or if donors, if the donor's payment is $50,000 or more is made in the six months preceding the election, and the organization makes a contribution or independent expenditure of $50,000 or more within the six months before an election. The bill would update the committee qualification thresholds from $1,000 to $2,000. The bill would also allow more time before campaign funds become surplus, and addresses the Commission's audit and injunction authority. And as noted in the memorandum, the author of this bill and the author of AB 800 are currently working on amendments to harmonize the provisions of both of these bills.
Thank you. Are there questions of Staff by the Commission? Commissioner Winn?
So this is really more procedural, but you don't have a Staff recommendation on this bill?
We didn't put one there because we originally asked for authority to have the Chair work with the Legislature and decide whether or not we want to support this once the amendments were made, that they're currently working on. So that's why it's not there.
So-
But we do recommend that you support it also.
Thank you.
This is Zach Marzini. I just wanted to specify that basically what the authors of AB 45 and AB 800 are doing are dividing up the provisions. There are some conflicting and similar provisions in, in the two. So that is a work in progress, especially with AB 45. You'll also notice that there's some nonprofit disclosure language in there as well.
It's Gary Winnick from Enforcement. Just to add, we had a full discussion about the 800 provisions. That's the universe of provisions that are going to be split necessarily between 800 and 45. So we've kind of had this discussion about those provisions. We're asking for kind of contingent authority, just given the way the legislative process is working, just work both, since those provisions are basically going to be divided between them.
Are there any other questions by the Commission? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak to this bill as well? Okay. We take your comments as applying to AB 45 as well. All right. Is there a motion by the Commission? Commissioner Winn?
So I'll move that we support this bill.
Is there a second? I will second the bill, second the motion.
Commissioner Kasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskovitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman? Commissioner Winn? Yes. Chair Rabel?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Moving on to AB 914, this bill would require nonprofit organizations that conduct significant campaign activity in California to file an annual report disclosing donors providing valuable information to the public about nonprofit organization campaign activity in relation to the organization's activities as a whole.
Any questions for Ms. Brar by the Commission?
Yeah, I have one.
Commissioner Winn?
So they have to file an annual report with the Commission and/or the Attorney General?
Yes.
So how is that disstationed?
Yeah, the reason why it's divided up that way is because the Attorney General generally has authority over charities, which are 501(c)(3)'s, and some 501(c)(4)'s that have, that conduct charitable activity in California. But we also wanted to get the other nonprofits that aren't 501(c)(3)'s and (4)'s, and that's why we have duplicate provisions in this bill, some for, that are within the Act, and some that are within the government code that cover what the AG has authority over.
Okay. Are there any, Commissioner Wasserman?
So with respect to, to that sort of determination, is, and I may have missed it, but is it then the situation that if one, if the entity is filing with the AG's office, they file something with us saying, we file with the AG's office? Or how does, how is that all dealt with?
In the bill, if they file with the AG's office, we're asking them that they also file it with us as well, the same exact document.
Okay.
Are there any other questions by the Commission?
I'm curious where the, the 10% threshold came from?
During our research process, we learned that typically charities that use 10% or more of their money towards campaign activities is considered pretty significant. They're allowed to conduct lobbying activities, and if, once that reach about, once it reaches about 10%, more than 10%, that's when it becomes questionable whether or not- about 10%, more than 10%, that's when it becomes questionable whether or not they can keep conducting campaign activity. So that's why we put that threshold there.
This is Zach Morzine, again. We took a look at IRS requirements and, and so we, we, we took a look at what nonprofits are allowed to do to maintain their charitable status in terms of their political activities. So I think, as Ms. Brar described, that 10% level is kind of a ballpark. So we were comfortable as staff that if a nonprofit is spending that amount of money and that amount represents 10% of their total expenditures, then they're really active in California politics and the voters are entitled to know what's going on.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak about this legislation? Okay, not hearing any. Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt the staff recommendation in support of the bill.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Wen.
Commissioner Kasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskovitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
The motion was to support or to sponsor?
Accept the staff's recommendation to sponsor.
Okay, because I thought the statement was to accept the staff and support.
To support the staff recommendation to sponsor.
Support the staff, okay.
Or you sponsoring staff.
Sponsor you to go camp.
Sponsor you.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wen?
Yes.
Chair Ravel?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on to AB 1090, this bill would give authority to the commission to advise upon and enforce Government Code Section 1090, which prohibits certain public officials from being financially interested in government contracts made by them in their official capacities.
Okay. Are there any questions by the commission? Commissioner Wasserman?
Okay. I guess we're going to go back to, like I said, some, some basic questions. And I guess the first question is, and I've looked at, I've, I've read this and there was indication about enforcement by the Attorney General's office. Why is this actually necessary, that this power come, come here now at this point?
Gary Winnick, Chief of Enforcement, maybe I can address this for you. 1090 as it's currently constructed is only subject to criminal enforcement, but it's very similar to the conflict of interest provisions we have in the Act. And the, the conflict of interest provisions we have allow for criminal, civil, and administrative enforcement, which covers kind of the full range of intent and levels of conduct. So for 1090, we get a lot of complaints on it, but we have an inability to act. So it's really all either criminal or nothing at this point. So this would kind of round out the range of enforcement options and address kind of a broader range of conduct that could be covered under 1090.
Could I, could I, let me augment that because just from my experience as having been counsel to local public officials for many years, there is an enormous amount of confusion on the part of most local elected officials as to their obligations that are different under 1090 versus their obligations under the Political Reform Act since they all relate to conflicts. And the importance of having a, an entity that can advise those people as to their duties under that, under that code section is really significant because, of course, there are criminal sanctions as well, and so it is extremely hard for people to operate fairly and openly if they don't know what, how to, how they are supposed to act under the law.
Sure. I was actually referring to the enforcement portion. I was going to ask, ask about that as well because it, it did seem confusing to me that folks who have an issue with 1090, given that we have an overarching conflicts, they can't come, for some reason can't come to the FPPC for advice. Now, why is that, where, where's that prohibition come out of essentially?
By statute in the government code, only the Attorney General has the authority to opine on the interpretation of statutes at a statewide level. We have the authority to opine on the Political Reform Act, but it doesn't go any further than that. So we're quite frequently, we'll see in an advice letter that comes through, we'll see that a fact pattern that gives rise to a 1090 violation, but we have to inform them that we can't advise on it and then we tell them to go talk to their district attorney or the Attorney General's office. And as a former supervising deputy attorney general, I can tell you that the opinions process, there's a unit at the Attorney General's office that is responsible for advising on matters like that and issue Attorney General opinions. 1090 opinions are rare. It's not, it's not anything like what the FPPC does here and my staff turns around advice usually in 21 days. It's a completely different process there. So you don't really, public officials don't really have a source of, to get solid advice on 1090 issues. And this bill would completely change that and give staff here the ability to interpret and advise on 1090, among other things.
Now, previously, the speaker had mentioned that the Attorney General's office hasn't taken a position with respect to this bill. Has that changed or?
I've been working hand in hand with Attorney General Harris's chief of the legislative unit. They have been there every step of the way as we work with Assembly Member Fong, who is the author of this bill. But no, they, again, in my experience there, experience there, they are a very busy shop these days and they haven't, haven't formally taken a position, yes or no. They were, they were open to this concept and were glad to see the bill moving along, but they haven't taken a position.
But, okay, so to be clear, they may not have taken a formal position, but you're saying not only are they fully aware of what's going on, they have actually been working with you and with the legislator on, on this issue. Is that, am I reading that right? I don't want to misstate, that's why I want to be clear.
I'll state it again. I didn't mean to imply that they were working with the legislature. I don't know that they are, whether they are or not, but I have been working with them.
Okay, thank you.
And we've also been working with the California District Attorneys Association on this bill as well, and they haven't formally taken a position either.
Because that aspect of 1090, I, I mean, I completely agree with the chair. I mean, this, in order to educate, to avoid having to enforce, avoid these situations when people are actually trying to do the right thing, they, they need a way to do that. But with respect to the other aspect of it, which respects to the enforcement, you know, and this also is something that I think is going to come up again and again as, as we're looking at changes that are proposed to the Political Reform Act, the, the division of responsibilities and powers, which may in some way diminish efficiency, but there was a reason for some of these divisions. The question is, you know, the justifications for dividing up powers between different, different agencies, you know, whether those things are still valid now, but we still take into consider, want to take into consideration, you know, that that concern was a real concern and was eventually codified.
I, I don't think that's a concern here, Commissioner Wasserman.
Sure.
Because 1090 was always a separate, I believe it preexisted the Act and was always been a separate, kind of obscure, in fact, prohibition, whereas when 1090 was authored, I'm sure we could ask Bob Stern this, but it, there's no indication that there was a direct intent to keep them separate for some reason. The Political Reform Act was, was its own creature. In our experience though, and I'll let Mr. Winnick discuss this, there's very similar provisions, though they have a bit different interpretations. The conflicts under 1090 are quite similar to conflicts we already advise upon and enforce under the Act.
I did read the case cited.
This is Gary Winnick, Chief of Enforcement. I also just want to make the point, I don't think we as staff, and I'll speak for us, I guess, as a whole, agree with Mr. Bell's assessment that the Act was designed to provide sort of this diffusion of powers, to provide a check on each other. We have had the opportunity to always interact with people who have been involved with both the creation of the Act and its implementation, even in the early years. It was more of a resource issue. I mean, the coverage we have covers the entire state, every local agency, you know, and we're an agency with a, you know, 25-person enforcement unit. So I think the concept from our perspective was more to branch out the authorities so there were more entities that could vigorously enforce the Act, I think was more of the concept. I'm not sure we necessarily agree with the diffusion.
I was going to let it go, but I will agree with what Mr. Winnick just said, at least having talked to some of the original writers of Prop 9, since they were all located in the Secretary of State's office and they thought that the FPPC was going to be a tiny little agency that was not, it was going to be difficult for it to get up to speed quickly. I think that they determined that they would put various powers in existing state agencies and had no intention really to diminish the ultimate power or abilities of the Fair Political Practices Commission as a commission.
I've had some discussions with some of those individuals and maybe I'm miss, giving too much weight to a primacy, but maybe, but I do believe that was a concern, but whether or not it was a primacy concern, a prime concern then, you know. But again, this goes back to what I'm saying about the education process.
Commissioner Wen.
Thank you very much. So like Zach, I worked at the Attorney General's office and the Attorney General's office historically has felt like they own Section 1090 and that nobody else is supposed to go near it. So I'm, you know, pleased to hear at least initially they're open to a conversation about it. So it does look like if, if the commission is pursuing some kind of cause of action and the Attorney General's office wants to trigger a 1090 cause of action, the commission steps out of the way.
That's correct.
So my only other concern really is that we, you know, kind of open up 1090 to kind of administrative causes of action and civil causes of action, which might give, you know, might dilute somehow the importance of 1090. And I don't know if you've given that much thought, but that would be something that I would be concerned about.
Yeah, in, in our discussion, this is Gary Winnick, Chief of Enforcement, our discussions with Attorney General's office and the District Attorney's Association, the thought really was, from our perspective at least, that any criminal action that was occurring would absolutely take precedence and literally we would have no ability to either open a parallel or subsequent one. But our discussions have revolved around, there are similarities to conflicts of interest, which are also, you know, serious ethical violations are some of our top priorities and that our experience of prosecuting those, we work closely with DAs and the Attorney General's office on those as well, that there is a range of intent and knowledge and sophistication of parties where someone may have done something that might be worthy of punishment, but perhaps doesn't rise to the criminal level and that criminal leaves you kind of all, all or nothing. And again, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth because that's not fair, but I, I think there was some understanding of that concept and some direct experience by the commission in the conflicts of interest sections that have given rise to that.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
I'd move that we.
It's going to be a public motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Olson.
Good afternoon. Lance Olson with Law from Olson-Halen-Fishburn. I'm here in individual capacity. I actually had a question. I don't have a, a particular position on whether the FPPC should enforce Section 1090 or not, but I thought I heard the staff tell you, and maybe I misheard, that the commission would also be interpreting the provisions of Section 1090. Is that correct?
Yes, there are amendments that I believe just crossed the desk.
All right. Well, that's my next question because I do not read that here in this bill. So there's nothing in the bill that was distributed publicly that would suggest that the FPPC can actually interpret Section 1090, but I gather there's going to be legislation that, or amendments that does that?
We were informed yesterday that they were submitted.
Yeah, they should be.
Last night.
Well, I would just say that, you know, with, if you don't have the ability to interpret, then I'm not sure you should have the ability to enforce. But, so I hope if this bill becomes, you know, real, that that, that is added to the legislation. My next question would be, and I have several that flow then from that, is whether, if the FPPC advises somebody, a public official, but they do not have a 1090 violation and can go ahead and participate in making of a contract, does that, would that preclude the Attorney General from them subsequently prosecuting that person criminally? I know it would preclude, I presume it would preclude you from administrative or civil, but I'm not, I don't, since I don't have the language, I don't know whether that would be the case or not, but if it doesn't, then I don't know what the point would be of, of having the ability to advise. And then the last question I have is whether or not, if you're going to have the ability to advise, whether you are going to apply the same principles that govern conflicts of interest under the Political Reform Act, Section 1090. So by way of example, you have a definition of who a public official is. 1090 does not have a definition of who a public official is. And public officials can include private actors and people who are not, you would not traditionally think of as, as a public official, such as commissioners to the FPPC. And, or you have to be financially interested in the contract. There's no definition of what financially interested is in Government Code Section 1090 or any of the relevant additional sections of 1090. But you have lots of regulatory definitions of what it means to essentially be financially interested in. So again, my question would be, would you have the, would you be, under the statute, applying essentially the same principles, the same definitions that you are familiar with and work with now? And I actually think that would be a good thing if you did that. I mean, if this, if you were going to have authority to interpret and enforce, one of the big problems with 1090 is there aren't any real definitions, other than you find out after you've been prosecuted in the, in the Supreme Court or Court of Appeal tells you what it means, but it's a little late in the game if you're the defendant. So it would be, I think, helpful to have some of those things clarified. I mean, as I said, I don't have a position on the concept of the FPPC getting involved in 1090. I just hope you think some of those things through. Thank you.
Thank you. It's good points.
Sure.
Very good points. Anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak about the 1090 bill? Interestingly, 1090, AB 1090.
I was hoping somebody would comment on that.
Yes.
It's pretty slick.
Nobody, nobody, any other questions by the commission? All right. Is there a motion?
I move to support the staff recommendation to sponsor AB 1090.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Kasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskovitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wen?
Yes.
Chair Ravel?
Yes. Is there anything else to come before the commission today? Any, any other comments from the audience? I would suggest that perhaps you have a conversation with Mr. Bell and Mr. County to talk about setting up a group to meet, to discuss those two bills that they referenced. Thank you all very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
We can just sit here.
I move to adjourn.
Commissioner Kasher?
Yes.
Commissioner Eskovitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wen?
Yes.
Chair Ravel?
Yes. And just don't call me Russ Johnson.